Hi, my name is Nadia and I'm running for Eastside's board. This is my first term, so I'm going to reelect for the second term. And I brought some flyers, the reasons why I want to reelect and why you want to vote for me. And so I put in the five reasons. First, the last year that four of our schools made it to the U.S. News list of the best high school in the nation. And we have also student academy tests for have been improved. And we have increased budget oversight and created an audit committee to ensure funds are used wisely. And now we also started construction projects to provide more classroom access. Come around, Eastside District has a lot of our school has been rebuilt and we have a new site, a new classroom to already add on. And also we modernized some support facilities and we invest in innovations like solar powers and continue that upgrading the technology for students and staff. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, the Eastside community that had put this event together. And it's just a short notice, so I didn't have a lot of flyers that I brought in today, but I have a few of them. But I just want to reinforce that I have been involved in the Eastside for the last four years and it's very honor for me to be on the Eastside, to work together with my colleagues, to really want to make a difference in our student. And we have done a very good job in terms of working together with the teacher associations, the state employee, and with the students to create a really nice culture for our students. And I really want to ask for your vote if you are going to work together with the school, especially again District 5, District 7, District 8, District 4, and District 2. So Eastside is a very huge district, it's like a large district in California, and we have our own school, we have the high school. So I really want to take this opportunity to, you know, get to know a little community, a little of your group, and hope that we can work together and make a difference in working on students. So thank you for the time that you've given to me, so I can join you this time.
Okay, next up from Eastside would be Frank Beal.
First of all, thank you so much for having us gathering tonight. It's so good to see people that are interested in our schools and the future of our students. My wife and I have lived in the Eastside for 24 years. Her name's Barbara. She used to work for Moxon, they're built a healthcare center, and she currently works for a footy health community, she's a dietitian. Both of our children went to Eastside High Schools and graduated, both of them, one from Evergreen High School and one from Mount Pleasant High School. So we've had an opportunity to really experience the educational system. I'm running for my third term on the board, and so it's not so much I should be standing here and saying what I'm going to do. I'm going to talk about some of the projects I've been involved in, and then you can make a judgment about whether we've made some progress or not. One of the first things I did when I got on the board was help create an audit committee to make sure that money was being effectively spent and audited and handled in the right way. And I can tell you, the last three years, our external audits have produced no findings whatsoever. Everything has been clean and wonderful, and that's the way it should be. We put together, we hired a senior manager of internal controls, an internal auditor. We established a whistleblower hotline, and at first there were a lot of calls and things coming into that line, and now there's virtually none. On the instruction side, I was active in promoting the A to G, which are the classes that are required to go to the University of California or state college systems, to make sure that those were the default classes for all of our students to take when they're freshmen and sophomores. So that we made sure that the gate was open for every student to have the opportunity to take classes that would qualify them for college. And because of that, our college going, our A to G completion rate is up in the district. In fact, we're driving the rate in the entire county. We were up by about 3%, and the whole county was up by 1%. But the reason the whole county was up is because of the work that was done at the Eastside. We opened another high school, an alternate high school, Calero, in the southern part of the district, a smaller school, for students that in their freshman year are not getting enough credits. They've got one or two Fs already in their freshman year. And so we give them an opportunity to go to a school that's a smaller school where they can be more focused to make sure that they're going to graduate. We also have a post-senior program. These are the students that continue with us with developmental disabilities all the way through age 25, and we build a program for them over at Calero. And the more important thing is we've reduced the dropout rate in our district from 17.4% to 13.7%, and we expect that to continue to go down. That's a dramatic decrease in the last four years. So on the fiscal side, I'm proud to say that I was actively a sponsor and a champion of a solar energy project that you see at all of our schools in the district. It's the largest solar energy project in a school district in the country at 7.6 megawatts. Saves us about $3 million a year. That's a lot of money on a $2 million budget, a $200 million budget, and it's been very, very successful. It's producing about 15% more energy than what was expected, and it's saving money, 43 million over 25 years. And the other thing that we've done is we've refinanced a lot of our bonds, we take advantage of the new interest rates, and we've saved the taxpayers $22 million by doing that over the next 10 years. So those are the major projects I've been working on. I also was involved in the passage of two bond issues. You've seen a lot of construction going on at our schools. Most of our schools were built about 30 to 35 years ago, and they were in great need of repair. We've done a lot of that work, we still have more to do, but you can tell that they look better. You just drive by James Lex School, and you can just see that that is a different school, that is a changed school. And we're in the process of converting that school to what we call a new tech high school, where all the learning will be done by project-based learning, using the Common Core, where you have multidisciplined projects that students work on. We're doing that one year at a time, starting with the freshmen this year. So I'm excited about the things that are happening at Eastside. I'd like to continue to do this for another four years, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to do this work. Again, it's the hardest job I've ever had for the least amount of pay, but the most important work I've ever had the opportunity to participate in. Thank you.
All right, so next up, we'll move to the Alamoak Union Elementary School District candidates that are here. We will start with the only candidate running for reelection, Andres Quintero.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to be here for you as a candidate. I'm usually here reporting on stuff that I do for my full-time job, but this is what I'm doing, and I'm not doing that. And I am running for reelection. I'm currently the president of the Alamoak School Board, and I have a daughter who's in the school. I have a vested interest. I'm a product of Alamoak School District, I'm resident of East San Jose, and that's why I'm running. I am not just running to sit in a seat and think, hey, it's pretty cool. No, I have a vested interest. I want to make sure that my child, that all of our children succeed in our Alamoak schools. I was just sharing with Ray here, a lot of the stuff that's going on, some of the great things, that I can, I'm privileged to say that I took the leadership on. As soon as I got onto the board, one of my first conversations with our superintendent at the time was, how are we going to get to full-day kindergarten? I was in this school district a long time ago, and I was at half-day kindergarten, and that's no longer acceptable for our kids. Two years later, through a long and drawn-out process, nevertheless, it's happened. Each one of our schools has extended-day kindergarten. We haven't gotten all the way there, but we sure are on our way there. We're a lot further than we were, and so I'm very excited about that. Looking out for partnerships. I've brought in the University of California to bring in curriculum that is accessible to each and every one of our students. Right now, we're running through a pilot program at some of our middle schools. However, my hope and dream is that at each one of our middle schools, we will have this University of California curriculum. So it's part of a process, but we're getting there. And all began with a conversation, and just putting in a lot of work. So I'm very excited about that. You know, there's a bunch of other stuff that I could talk to you about, and I probably will, as we go along. However, I just want to let you know that I'm very, very passionate about Alamoak. The amount of work that I put in is, like trustee Beal said, it's the hardest work that you've ever done, nevertheless, it's the most rewarding because it does have the greatest impact on our future. If I wind up failing what I'm doing, I've failed generations on, I'm not going to let that happen. So like I said, I'm very, very excited. Some of the other stuff that we've been doing is implementing that bond that our community entrusted with, very much needed. We have just a half a billion dollars' worth of needs. Unfortunately, due to our, to the asset valuations of our properties here, Alamoak, we can't just bump down the money that we need and get the jobs done. We have to do it little by little, and so we're working with what we have. And so the matter is, now the task at hand is to prioritize. And so as part of the bond facilities committee, I've gone ahead and made sure that we focus on health and safety in our schools. And so it might not be the sexiest thing, but plumbing has been the priority because that's what people are demanding. Those are the things that people are bringing to my attention, and so after consulting with staff, yes, we definitely need to fix the plumbing, we need to fix those bathrooms. And so those are the things that I'm doing, some nuts and bolts type of thing that we're doing day-to-day there at Alamoak. I'm very excited to have been able to take the leadership and bring in our new superintendent. And this will tell you more about what I bring, what perspective I bring to the position. A lot of folks go out there and say, hey, we need a new superintendent. Let's go get an executive search for $30,000, and bam, there you go. Well, we're in Alamoak, we don't have $30,000 spare, and so we got to think outside the box, let's figure out how to do this, do it responsibly. Went ahead, we brought in a consultant to do some of our technical work. Obviously, we need experts to be able to lead us through the beginning part of the process, but then, through a lot of sweat equity, we were able to do a lot of the work that most of these executive search firms do. Took tons of hours, all of our own time, in the evenings, on the weekends, entire days. Nevertheless, I was able to lead the board to be able to get a superintendent that cares about the district, has a history of the district, proven track record of passion and a lot of work for the district. And so now we are moving ahead. Some of the very interesting things that, right from the get-go, began was moving our middle schools, like Matson. We have some schools that are struggling, and we're going to move into a science-based focus. So I'm very excited about the things that are happening there, and I just got the 30-second sign. So please come out to my fundraiser on October 1st, out in Rancho del Fuego Golf Course, there where we can continue to talk and you can ask me more questions. Please come out if you so choose.
All right, next up from Alamoak School District, we have, I just want to make sure, I know the first name, but I'm not sure I get it right, last name, Maribel Moreno.
So my name is Maribel Moreno, and I'm running for Alamoak School District. And I'm running because I feel a need, there's a need in our district. I have three children, two of whom have gone to Eastside Union High School District, you know, they've gone to school there. I have a son, he's going to be going to school soon, and I would like to see some changes in our district. I have heard, my understanding is that we need to address public issues. I want my son to feel safe with his, you know, with the other children that are going to be going to school with him. And I feel like safety is an issue, and they need to feel comfortable going to school and not being afraid. Another issue that I would like to address would be the junior highs. My understanding is that some of the families are not sending, the parents are not sending their students to our middle schools, they're sending them elsewhere. And I understand why they're feeling like, you know, gangs, there's violence, and drugs and all that. I would like to bring to the district gang prevention programs, hire more police officers, so that they can feel comfortable sending their children to school. I think that's a great, you know, it's a need right now in our district. Another thing that I would like to see is that the infrastructures, the structures of the schools to be maintained, like to be, you know, like be done. Some have been done in the 50s, the buildings are old, I know some, I've been talking to some of my neighbors, and they say that the plumbing, like this was addressing, is really bad, sometimes the sinks are overflowing. And that's not meant to go to school and have your kids go through that. It should be easy to, you know, to have that for the children. We live in the United States, so our school should, you know, system should be a little bit better. And those are the reasons, those are the issues that I would like to address. This is the first time I'm running, so this is all new for me, and, you know, speaking in public. But I do have this passion that I want you guys to know, that I do have. I come from a labor union organization, and I see that a lot of the, we always try to focus on putting people in place that have passion, that are just like you and me, we're working people, that want the best thing for our kids, best education, so they can be something for tomorrow, not just a number, like, oh, just like, oh, they're just Eastside Union High School, or they live on the Eastside, like we're nothing. No, we can make a difference. If we put the correct people in place, there's always people that can work at it and have that passion. Why? Because they're investing in their community. How do you get the word out? Go talking to parents, see what their needs are, what do they see? Because we're not the day-to-day with the kids, but they are, they hear what their kids are saying. Like my daughters, they come home and they say this and this is going on in school. They're telling me, they're seeing it, they're living it. So why have this bad opinion about the Eastside? There's nothing wrong with the Eastside. I grew up in the Eastside, and I'm a product of the Eastside, and I'm just fine. So I hope that what I've said convinces you to vote for me, because I feel like I can make a difference.
Thank you. Next up from East, from East San Jose, Esau Herrera.
Thank you, Kim, thank you. I'm Esau Herrera, a candidate for Alamoak School Board. I'm a product of Alamoak School District. I started kindergarten in Alamoak. I graduated from Alamoak, a proud graduate of Orofelt High School, and a graduate, proud graduate of Santa Clara University. And I proudly note that my daughter, just two years ago, graduated from Santa Clara University. I'm very proud of my kids. Both of them are middle school teachers. My daughter is a science teacher, sixth-grade science teacher, at a charter school in Colorado. Kids grow up, they want to make their own decision, they want to move away from home. I'm not sure I like that, but my daughter moved away and having a great time, grew up to be the independent kid that I wanted her to be. My son is a seventh-grade English teacher at a charter school here in East San Jose, downtown College Prep, Alamoak campus. I'm very proud of my kids. Being a product of Alamoak, being a product of Eastside, being a product of our community, education is important to me since the get-go. Would you tell them, I'll call them right back in a short while, please? I'm busy right now. But I want to also thank you for being here, because your presence here indicates that education is important to you. It certainly is important to me. I have prior experience as a trustee. During the daytime, I'm a lawyer, and I say that because the business of public education is complex, multifaceted, at both the local, county, state, and federal level. You have to be well acquainted with all those myriad of rules and regulations and how we can maximize all that for our kids. Well, that's what I do during the daytime. I read that fine print, I read that detail, and I put it to use for our kids. I have the passion, the energy, and particularly now with my kids, both teachers, to support our teachers and their quest to educate our kids. So if you want an experienced voice, if you want a well-educated voice, if you want a homegrown person that went to school here, graduated here, and still lives here, then I would respectfully ask for your vote. I'm Esau Herrera, proud dad of two middle school teachers. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Esau. And our final candidate that's here for Alamoak Union School District is Khan Tran.
I am happy to be here, I'm glad to be here. Just want to start out, I'm a product of Shepherd Middle School, so I remember when I went to school at Shepherd and then I went to Independence, and somehow I graduated and will. But it's good. And I'm also a product of ELP, San Jose State University. So I can tell you why public school is important, because I'm not always a talented student. I never had 4.0 GPA, but I have my moment. Today, I'm an advanced senior security engineer for Cisco, before that Microsoft won this name. And you know what? Having an ELP student who scored an average GPA of 2.5 really did do well in school, was able to achieve, you know, digit figure and working for, my boss write books for Cisco, write books for the industry, because I have that moment. In fact, I didn't. So what I view of public school is like, it's not about how high you score, how low, it's about your moment. See, there will be that time when you can excel, but other times you don't feel right, because people have their bad days and good days. So I believe that public school is important, and it should be available, so when the kids are ready to excel, we'll be there for them. And that's why I'm running, to make sure that public school is strong. We kind of like improve on what was already good. Public school is great today, it's better than, better than any other nation, since I travel around the world, I know. But we're going to reinvent it, make it even better. And to do that, we need to make sure that school should be fun, and my platform is fun in school. It's not about having fun, but it's about we should have created a fun environment, so kids won't go fall asleep in school. They should, you know, study hard, work hard, and play hard. I want to bring back sport program. When I was going to like fourth grade, eighth grade, you know, our kids are playing track and field, you know, these things, competition, flag football. I want to bring that back. Yeah, it costs money, sure, but that's our responsibility. We got to make sure our kids have rounded education. We want to make sure the kids are off the street and playing sports, after-school activities beside of learning. We want them to be in, on the weekend, in school, playing competition, and with their parents, after working hard, doing two jobs to make ends meet, watch their children play football, or basketball, or chess tournament, or anything else. So that way, why? Build a self-confidence, the kids. Bring back ambition, make them competitive, so when they do go to high school, when they do go out in the industry, they can help me make America strong again, right? If not, then we're already strong, we want to be even stronger. So I'm Khan Tran, running for Alamoak School District, and I'm not here, I promise you, if I get elected, I'm going to be here for eight years. Because, believe me, I don't want to run for city council, because I can't afford. I have child support to pay, and I'm a single dad, and my ex-wife is a single mom, and I want to make sure my kids, who also went to school, have a good future and be like me. You know, don't have to be the best, just don't have to score high on test, just make sure when their moment comes, I'll be there, our school will be there, make sure they will be the leaders of this nation in the 24th century. Thank you.
Next, our other elementary school district representative. Elementary school district, and so we have Betty Martinez, who is currently the board president for Mount Pleasant, and she is running for reelection unopposed, but she still felt it was important to come and address the community, so thank you, Betty.
I'm really lucky, well, good evening first of all. I'm really, really fortunate to be able to say that I'm running for reelection, but I ran unopposed. There were two other members, there were two of us running, three of us, sorry, excuse me, three of us running this time around, and because we ran unopposed, we don't have to campaign. So I don't have to sit, stand here this evening and try to persuade you to like me or vote for me because, you know, it's a done deal already, so that's the good news. So Kim asked me if I would just say a few words about why I chose to run. And I think it's because one of the many experiences that I've learned growing up and becoming a professional, I was a past school teacher and a community organizer, and one of the things that I learned is that you can make change from within the institution, but you also have to know how to collaborate with people who are outside of the institution so that you can work together. One individual person can't do it by themselves, there have to be many, many organizations, many, many people united, parents, teachers, the children, the students themselves, community organizations, politicians, everybody has to be engaged in this effort to make change. And I'll give you an example of a couple of folks who really believe in helping students. We had the Turner who came into a fourth-grade class in Alamoak School District, where my daughter teaches, and I volunteer in her classroom and help out too. And they came and they tutored some of the children who were a little behind in math, and some of them were big behind in math. But they came and they did it for a couple of years, and I thought, that's wonderful. When you have a person from the inside, and you have family, and you have parents and community that wraps themselves around even one child, that can make all of the difference in the world. So that was one of the reasons that I wanted to run, is because I knew that I had this skill, that I could bring lots of different, myriads of forces to bear in the school district. One of the things that school board members have kind of against us, if you will, is that people, you can't visually see what we're doing. Like, you can visually see what a teacher is doing in a classroom and the teaching and the instruction, but you can't see what school board members. So there's a tendency to think, oh, well, they're just not doing anything, they're not very effective. Well, it's not true. So I'd like to invite you to come and speak to any board member and ask them, what's going on in their school? What have you done? What changes have you created? Because we even tend to do that with one another. The other role that we have as school board members is that we have to collaborate with each other, because, simply because I think my idea is the best idea since sliced bread doesn't necessarily mean that the four other people on the board are going to agree with that. They might think that their own idea is better. So then we have to collaborate with each other and know how to work strategies with each other, so that the best programs for students are being implemented. And this is going on all of the time, in every school district, all over the county, all over the nation, that this is going on. And people think, well, nothing is being done for our kids. Well, that's not true. There's billions and billions of strategies being applied, but we all have to be involved in collaborating and helping one another with those. I can go on and on with the list of the kinds of things that we've done and try to impress you with all these programs and initiatives that I've been, I've been privileged to influence my school district. But the other thing that, another point I'd like for you to kind of tuck away is that most of our budget, at least 80 if not more percent of our budgets go to personnel, which leaves us with the rest to create these wonderful strategies and programs that innovate and help our children, which is another reason why we have to be the type of people who can go out there and ask for money and not be embarrassed. We fundraise, we beg, we steal. We do everything.
Ideas only.
If it's not nailed down, it's from my school district, kind of thing. But so those are, those are some of the key skills, and I can go on and on about being a board member, but as the young woman said a while ago, it's inside you have to have a compassion and a passion. A compassion to help the struggling kids, and a passion to help continue to motivate those who are doing well to do better and reach higher. So all of our children need every one of us in this room. It's not just the school board members, it's not just the students or the teachers, it's all of us in this room. Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, our last board that we have candidates for is the county board seat that represents East San Jose. So first up, we have Darcy Green.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and sticking it all the way through to the county office of education. My name is Darcy Green, I'm the current vice president of the Santa Clara County Board of Ed. I represent trustee Area 6. How many of you know where trustee Area 6 is? Two of you, school board members, teachers? Okay, so trustee Area 6 is here, Alamoak, Mount Pleasant, over where Ms. Betty is, all the way through Franklin McKinley and parts of downtown San Jose, particularly the parts of downtown San Jose that we know to be, to be underserved or in need of additional services. I've served on the County Office of Education for almost two years, having come from Allen Rock here, where I serve as vice president. And before I get into the spiel and things I'm going to say, I want to take this opportunity to thank many of you who are in the room, because as I look around the room, I see people who have been there with me as I've traveled on this journey through public office, people who have been there to give me advice and guidance, people who have supported me, whether it was in my Allen Rock run or at my appointment to the County Office of Ed, and hopefully now as I run for election to the seat that I currently hold. And the reason that I believe that's really important to say this thank you to those of you who have been there, whether it be directly or indirectly, is because I truly believe that any accomplishments that I've made, whether it was while I was at Allen Rock, or difference that I've made, whether it was in Allen Rock, or difference that I am making on behalf of our children here in East San Jose as a county board of ed member, I am doing with all of you, and I'm doing because of all of you. So I also was writing a list of the things that we've accomplished, whether it be our Strong Start Initiative, and that's hopefully by 2020 to find a way to provide universal early ed to every child in the county, or our Come Back Kids Pilot Program, which is dropout recovery in Santa Clara County, our Foster Youth Database, which is getting up the money, ensuring that we're tracking all of our foster youth and making sure they're not falling through the cracks if they might transfer from district to district. Our PBIS symposiums, we had our first one last year, I was happy to help plan, that's Positive Behavioral Interventions. Those of you who know me know that I'm very big into anti-bullying work and behavioral change over discipline, and we're working hard on that. Arts for students who are in juvenile hall, art therapy, and art education for students who are in our alternative ed programs and juvenile hall. And as I read through these lists, I know that I wouldn't have been able to do any of these things, and I certainly don't do them all by myself, there's no I here. This is absolutely because of all of the support I have from the people that I represent. The County Office of Education is similar to school districts in some ways, but unlike school districts in other ways. We are the safety net. We have the same relationship to districts that the county has to cities. We are the safety net for public education. We serve students who have special needs, are in alternative education programs, who are in our Head Start programs, foster youth, migrant ed, professional development for teachers. It's a very important place, and I'm proud to be there because I have a passion for those exact students. So with that, I want to thank you for all of your support over the years, thank you for all that you do and hosting this event. I hope that you all become even more engaged with the work of the County Office of Education. And I invite you to any of our meetings, they're not yet televised like Allen Rock is, so you can't watch them on the weekends and see their smiling faces over there, but hopefully soon they will be. But if you do have an interest in policy, you do have an interest in those students who historically fall through the cracks, and the County Office of Ed is where you want to be. And I'm proud of the work that we're doing, we have a long way to go, and we're certainly not perfect, but we're on the right track, and thank you for helping me to get there. I look forward to continuing to serve all of you, to represent all of you, and to be in that position with all of you for years to come. Thank you.
My name is Dolores Marquez, and I've been on the board for Allen Rock for two terms now. I'm on my second term, in the middle of the term. I am what they call in a safe seat. So for me, when I was approached by my community to run for the County Office of Education, I was approached by saying, you can do it because you're in a safe seat. I'm like, what's a safe seat? And he goes, well, you can try and run, you can run for the County Office of Education seat, and if you win, you resign your seat. If you don't win, you go back to your seat and continue the work you're doing in Allen Rock. So that was appealing for me, and I said, okay. You know, I think what we have been going through in Allen Rock was a big concern for me, particularly with the way that the County Office of Education was, you know, was just handing down and rubber stamping charters that wanted to come up in our district. Fortunately, they almost all landed in our district, not all of them have opened, but all of them wanted to come into our district, which caused our budget a big strain and our families a lot of hardships. Schools had to be closed, consolidated, and it was sad when we had to give up some of those schools and close them. So with a lot of passion that I have for my district, I was committed to try and run and change, try and change the makeup of what the County Board of Education up there was just doing with no consideration to the districts. It was ironic for me to say, you hold us accountable, but you're making the decisions that are impacting my district. So do you see something wrong with this picture? Because I do. How can you make this decision, you know, up at this level, and then it impacts us, particularly Allen Rock? And then we have to be held accountable to you with our budgets, with our finances. So for me, it became, it became a passion, that I really do want to help districts like mine that are impacted with charter schools that are truly not there for the spirit or the intent of the law, what the charter law meant, rather a business. We kept seeing it over and over, because I do support charters. You know, I have gone to Eastside School District and advocated for charters of those schools, charters that were really, really were opening up to help those students that the charter law was intended for. And so I went and I spoke in behalf of three charters in your district in Eastside. So I voted to have charters in my district because my community and my families wanted choices. And I said, yeah, you know, we did, we gave our community choices. We had given them choices, and Kim will remember, we were both just bringing up small schools at that time, it was a concept of bringing a school within the school, small schools, and it was a choice for our parents. And then after that, charters came in, and so we let some of those charters, we chartered some of them, and some of them were chartered by the county. So our community has more than choices, more than their share of choices, and I support them, because those are our share, they're all our children, whether they're in the charter schools, or in the small schools, or in public education. But I am a big proponent of public education. I am a mother and a grandmother in this community and have been here for over forty-five years. This is home. I may have not been born here, but this is home for me. My children and my grandchildren have grown up here, some of my grandchildren have moved out, but I still have one at the house that came back to me, my first grandchild. How many of us don't take in our grandchildren? So I'm still parenting, he is twenty-two, but those are the critical years for them. They're not quite yet to go out and venture into the world, but they're not children anymore. So I adore my grandson, and he does live with me, and he went through the schools here in Allen Rock. So it would be my pleasure to have your support to run and be elected for the County Office of Education. I feel that we need to bring back to what the County Office of Education was meant to be for our schools, our districts, a support, rather not a one agenda item that everybody knows is pushed up there, and that's pushing charter agenda and impacting us, but you have to look at the whole thing, the whole districts. And for me, it would be like I probably just said, Mount Pleasant, Allen Rock, Franklin McKinley, and some of the San Jose United Heights. But I will go out to my voters, my ten thousand voters that voted for me, that I set a record in this district for being, have been elected with those votes that anyone had ever been sent. I appreciate that. Thank you.